The meeting is called to order. This is a special meeting of the Andover Planning Commission. We're here to primarily review suggestions. I just want to reiterate, Martha Harrison is reviewing our town plan, which is re-adoptable next year in August. And she's reviewed it and that seems to have changed her changes. Not only changes to make it better, but also to comply with state requirements as well. And updated our statistics as well. So with that, before we go get to our... Martha, I need to have you review the Act on the Minutes of May 6. I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I have a motion. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Martha, please, give us a sample of your wisdom.
Can I share my...
You should be able to. It says it's not turned on.
Maybe I have to give you permissions somehow. I'm not... I see you on here, so you're connected. For participants.
Like on her with every option?
Also, I'm trying to... Let's see, there's... Dots here. Make co-host. For that, have a question.
Try to keep it as minimal as possible. So if you all looked at it in advance, you have any comments, please stop me along the way. You don't have to update your plans every five years now. It's now it's every eight years. It's just statistics, 2020, mostly 2020 census statistics. They no longer seem to have information on the number of families. They seem to be doing it more by household, so just cross that information out. Tweak the language a little bit on the goals, just to... Make them consistent with each other. Happy to change that back if someone doesn't like the language. Population, in the last plan, it said your population was decreasing. And now it's increasing, so I had to change the language around that.
Yeah, the Andover's population by the last count is 568. It used to be like...
What is it on Friday night?
It used to be like 490 for years and years. It's just got a bit...
What was it, 300s when we were kids? There's some data in here that...
There was probably more cows.
Well, maybe they don't care.
Go ahead. During the 1800s, it was over 1,000.
Yeah, some data in here that doesn't seem to be available anymore.
You can brush that out.
And this is updates. If it's highlighted in yellow, it's because I still need to find that data somewhere. So this is updated statistics. Household incomes, things like that that are available. If it was necessary to kind of just tweak the language a little bit to come to comply with the information that I found, I did that. Updated this table on employment, what types of industries people worked in over the last 50 years. Just crossed out the old one. Again, the yellow is just information that I'm still looking for. Yeah, I do have data on your the number of electric vehicles in town, so I added that.
We have electric vehicles in town.
Available last time. Two right next to me.
Really?
Yeah, what's the number? I can't see from here.
They experienced from out winters an electrical vehicle.
There's nine altogether. Some are electric, all-electric, and some are plug-in.
All-in combination, yeah. Oh, that's interesting.
Our last plan, we were going to have plug-ins here, right? I mean, electrical.
Did we have something?
What was in the plan until they do that?
I didn't realize that we had something that people could plug in.
You have a separate energy plan? Maybe there's a recommendation. Maybe you were saying something about energy the last time.
Yeah, it may have been in that. It was a...
Well, that could be. But you know, the selectmen or the final arbiter about what they're going to do.
You know, we're going to do this one day.
Well, that's just interesting. That's all. Go ahead, please.
Housing, there's lots of changes at the state level on housing. So they redid their housing needs assessment, which they do every five years. And they gave each of us, each of our planning commissions, they broke down their targets for housing and gave each planning commission their target. And we are then supposed to break that down for our towns. But I have not added any of that information in here yet.
The statistics that the RPC came up with is that Andover needs to add 19 houses for affordable housing.
But none of our houses are affordable.
But that's just a state requirement, okay?
I've got the ones on top of the...
But yeah, you're right. They're not affordable because, you know, who can afford to buy a house in the state of Vermont, actually?
Yeah.
So, but if you would, you know, include that, it's just a recognition that the state wants us to address the issue. It doesn't tell us how to do it.
There's no yes.
But well, if they do tell us how to do it, they will come, they'll have to come up with some help to do it, you know? And the suggestion of how we actually do it legally and physically. So, but some of the language that's going to be in there is because the state requires us to recognize that there's an issue.
In Vermont.
In the state of Vermont. That's the wisdom of the legislature. So, but that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, they're targets. There's no kind of thing. Just they want everyone to kind of have an idea of what's needed in state. I updated your definition of affordable housing.
Yeah.
Didn't need the current definitions. And then just updated all the data about the number of housing units and how they are actuated, seasonal, all that stuff.
So those are the new statistics that are...
They're new statistics.
Just needed updating.
Yep. Assess value, all that stuff. So I will have to add in the housing targets and I want you to include some actions that could be used to achieve those targets. Probably be something like updating your zoning regulations to... I mean, there is only regulars already. Dwelling units and duplexes and things like that, but in a town of this size, it's not going to be building a 20-unit apartment building or anything like that, so.
Well, it wouldn't make any sense. We're still living in Andover and then traveling 30 miles to go to work. You know, it's not feasible. But as Martha says, it's a mention, it's an aim for us to address the issue and recognize that there is an issue, that's all.
And I did update your, one of these recommendations, which said, review the zoning regulations. I just said to update them because of the various regulations that are passed that relate to housing, Act 47 and Act 181 primarily.
Yeah. We are going to, that's another, the next project is reviewing the zoning regulations and updating those. And making sure that it addresses all of the issues that state mons has to include in there. And also to include the new statistics and such. But that's next, the next project after this one.
And you know, right now, state law overrides local law anyway, so technically those laws are in place.
Yeah.
And it's less confusing for your constituents if your zoning regulations include them. So they're not getting contradictory. Education, I did get updated information from the two inverse supervisory union for all the most recent years. They had different information for some of your prior years, but unless you have strong feelings, otherwise I'll just leave them the way they were in that.
They have changed over the years. They have changed the kind of information that they gather together. So some of it may be new and some of it will be discontinued, so just use the current.
Transportation, I looked at your highway map. There were a few changes. I don't know what happened to make those changes, but I just updated the data again. So that's on your...
I have a couple roads. Class three roads were... Speaking class four, basically that's what the changes were. I'm like, I think one was discontinued.
Okay, so that's reflected here.
Yeah. We just got the brand new maps today, actually, the paper copies.
And I used our most recent town report to get an estimate for your total highway department expenses relative to the total budget.
Yeah, they should be able to give you that.
Yeah, I just kind of went through and added stuff.
Oh, yeah. That's good.
Yeah, some of these names have changed. Mover used to call the current. Their description of their services a little different, so I just updated that. This one, the five-year priority of need, I talked to Joe. I need help updating this because I don't know what's been done and what still needs to be done and whether there might be other projects that aren't done here that need to be done.
I think what we need to do is get some input from the select board because they're really the ones to decide what the priorities are. And I've been thinking about this and it may be the better part of valor for us to say that the list of priorities is determined by the select board, not us. And the only thing that's in there is in the town plan is to recognize that the select board is the one that makes the determination of what the priorities are. So that we don't have a list of things that we think they should do because they all object to it. And I mean, for us to be that specific is really nonsensical because we don't have the power to do it. So I think Martha and I will have to talk about that, how to word it. And but if you're basically in agreement that we do away with the priority list and just indicate that the priorities are determined by the select board.
Is there, Jason, is Jason...
Yep.
Okay, is there any, is there a benefit, a potential grant eligibility benefit for listing projects like?
Certainly can't hurt. And there's a statutory requirement that you sort of identify needs and that could be potentially more vague, but I think it's nice to have, you know? It'd be nice to talk to Charlie, maybe the select board, and maybe have a list of what they're thinking. That'd be my two cents.
My hearing is really bad.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, let's just make sure that we consult. Martha and I will talk to Jason and get it all straightened out so that... But if you're, if the members are basically in agreement that we will do away with the list of priorities and make a statement that says the list of priorities is basically a select board's responsibility. So that we're not out there saying a specific list, which we have no power to enforce anyway.
Unless they want to make a list.
Well, that is, that would be appropriate.
Do it.
Yeah, there would be a pull-up. Hi, Charles here.
Yeah.
Chuck, I'm Chuck. Thank you. Cool. Thought the meeting was 6:30.
It is.
Well, it is.
This is a planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
So I added two recommendations that are standard things. You know, if you want to add them.
Yeah.
You can leave them in there and if you don't...
What other recommendations?
One is to maintain an up-to-date inventory of highway infrastructure. Over bridges, roads.
Yeah. I think, I think if I have, Jonathan, you must know, you might know, if they have a... It's the highway department.
Yeah, I think Charlie has.
They have all of those, they have all of the lists of all of the roads that they take care of.
Oh, yeah.
And all the culverts that they have, that they're maintaining. So I think that's probably something that is already happening.
Right, I think, yeah, safe to leave it in there. Probably, and applying for the flex 2 pay structure grants is something that also...
Well, they're doing that as much as they can use.
I didn't think it would hurt.
Yeah, that's fine.
To any of them. Public facilities. You probably know that Andover got a fairly sizable grant to do energy improvements to this building, the town hall and the town garage. And that's being planned right now.
Yeah, I think they're working, they're working through on that.
Yeah.
That's why we're doing, somebody there, they're consulting.
Yes.
Sure.
And then those should be done in 2020. We have that as a tax recommendation to develop the capital program. I just made a suggestion, wanted to do that, we could have a list of quite similar.
Just put it in there because we had it in there before and we never did anything with it. Because I don't, I don't know that the select would have appetite for going down that rabbit hole. No, because doing a capital plan is very intensive and you have to, you have to think about what the future is. And you know, project what you're going to do in maybe 10 years from now. Or what the result's going to be in 10 years from now, so I'm not sure that that's something we're actually going to be able to do. But it's not going to hurt the town plan if we have it, if we mention it.
And I didn't add it. It was already in there. I just think if you wanted to get started and you don't want to take on a huge project, it's baby stuff.
Well, the thing is, if you and I can discuss it and you can make suggestions that I think will work, we'll think about it.
Energy, your energy plans. Utilities, can we also change anything in natural resources? I just mentioned the recent air quality with smoke from fires burning out west. We're off north and up north. Northwest. But this summer, it was... Fires that, you know, gave us the air. Policies. Logging has to comply with best management practices. Since you were mentioning the Department of Agriculture relative to the agricultural practices I mentioned, so Department of...
Well, we've had that.
Yeah, just kind of clarifying.
Right.
Development plan for land, ag enforced land, set to comply with state, local and federal regulations. So I was, I added that and just moved one of the things that you already had in there next to it. The one that's completely crossed out, I merged with the one that's two bullets down.
Yeah.
Just so you don't have two kind of overlapping. Act 181 has something about the length of roads that you can have in forest blocks, so I changed that number. I don't think it's prohibited, but I have to check on that. I think it's just that it's limited to 800 feet.
Well, just update the statistics as they require you.
Yeah.
That's it.
And I clarified under wetlands that you need a permit from the Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources for development in a class one or class two.
Yeah, right.
So you may have heard of the municipal road general permit that was put into place in 2015, 2016, and then the information you had in there was just general about what it is and what it requires. Since then, there's a lot more information available about Andover specifically, so I put that information in there. And Andover's actually doing very well with the municipal road progress, so it can reflect well on the town to have it in. And again, no requirements other than what's already there, basically. It says for goals to complete an updated road erosion inventory by October 31, 2027. That's just a requirement, so all towns have to do it, hopefully then.
And what are they going to do to us if we don't do it?
This is a plan. I'm glad, as I said, you're doing very well.
Well, yeah, I think we're over... Okay. Have a seat somewhere. We're not done yet.
Okay, sorry.
I can get more chairs.
Remember, for the original, just noting that Act 181 is going to give jurisdiction over river corridors to the state starting January 1, 2028. So you're not going to need to worry about regulating river corridors.
Yes.
And that's another thing, in order to bump my, um, federal mortgage insurance to build a new house, and it's what's running, got to be two feet above the base water elevation, it used to be one foot.
Yeah, we have some flexible language in there anyway, don't we?
You have, we have separate hazard regulations.
Yeah.
But you specifically did mention the one foot, so I wanted to say now it's...
Yeah, bring that up to date.
Let's see, this... So the requirements there. This is just trying to simplify the wording a little bit, make it consistent, the rest of the wording. I added annually review the town's progress and implementing the local hazard mitigation plan. It's a good idea. Again, if you don't do it, it's, there's no...
Nobody's going to come out and say we don't do it.
And if you don't want to improve that, you can...
Well, what we'll do is, I've got, we're under some pressure here. Martha, if we would, I would ask you to put a synopsis together of all of the suggested changes. And it'll probably be about two or three pages, I hope. No more than that, because I don't want to print the town plan, it's 40 pages long. I don't want to print it out and then have all of those things, all of us look at that. What I'd like to do is have you put together all of the suggested changes that you're suggesting for us. And we'll have another meeting of the planning commission and we'll go over the list and then decide what it is we actually want to change. Okay? And then...
Does everyone have this out? Martha's out.
I think you said it, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll send it.
And that's probably...
I can send it, I'll send it to Jeanette and have them send it to all of the members. And once we've done that, at the next meeting, we'll go over it. And then you and I will discuss what we're going to actually do to change, to change the town plans. And once we do that, then we will have a copy of the changes in the town plan document. And that's where we can have a public hearing on getting some public input. And then once we get it done with, get done with the town plan and the public hearing, then we can forward it to the select board and have them do their thing with it, okay? I'd like to make sure that we get that done before the end of the year. So that they have a period of time that they can go through their process as well. Okay? I hate to make us get a little short here, but I want to thank you for doing your thing and coming down to, there are some updates and stuff, but...
And I was almost done, so that's fine. The only thing is...
Yeah, great. I knew you were almost done, yeah, and that's why I'm sort of brushing you. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But if we all agree, we will proceed with that. Well, I will schedule another meeting in a month for the planning commission to move over that three-page thing that Martha has sent to me. And we'll discuss what we are actually going to change. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned at 6:29.
Wow.
It is 6:31. And the Board of Adjustment meeting is called to order. And the Board of Adjustment meeting is called to order. The first quarter of business is to, uh, adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
We adopt the gen- agenda.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda, is there discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, we need to, uh, act on the minutes of September two, which is our last meeting. What is your pleasure concerning the minutes of September two? I have a motion to approve the minutes of September two, is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. Uh, we come to, uh, all business. We are conducting a public hearing. On an application for a permit to subdivide property on nine, on five nineteen Lovejoy Brook Road submitted by Dexter Brown. We have a map here to show what, uh, Mr. Brown has, uh, is proposing to do, is Mr. Brown here?
He's on.
I'm here.
Okay, alright. Explain to us what it is you wanna do.
No, we're just. Splitting the property between on each side of Thompson Road. So the house will have four something acres and the others eventually just gonna go into conservation.
Do we intend to sell the, the, the property with the house?
No.
Are you keeping it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm subdividing mainly for financing reasons, just to, just to separate the house and have the house just on its own. Lot with the, on the other side of the road.
Wha- what do you mean, the other side?
The other side of Thompson Road, Thompson Road.
Oh, okay, alright, I see it, I see it, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
So here's the house, that's a four point two acre, then this is eight point eight, whatever, so that's up to thirteen.
So, uh, do any members have a question for Mr. Dexter? Dexter Brown, Mr. Brown, I should say, excuse me? Well, don't speak all at once. It's pretty straightforward, yeah, okay. Uh, are you, uh, did you submit a, a, an in-ground disposal system for that new lot?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, it's all, it's, I gave every, everything to Jonathan.
There's, you're not gonna have anything on the piece you're chopping.
A lot, the eight acres, there's not gonna be any buildings on it.
Right, yeah, so there, there isn't anything on the.
There, there's, there's no in, uh, dis- in-ground disposal design for that lot.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Does the public have a, have a, any input? On Mr. Brown's application? We do have some publics here. Okay. Um, it is. The, uh, public hearing is adjourned at seven thirty, six thirty-five. And I need a motion to, uh, to deal with the application. So. I have a motion to approve the application to make us, uh, do a subdivision. At five nineteen Lovejoy Brook Road for Mr. Dexter Brown. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Hey.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. Next, next item is new business.
Thank you, Jonathan. See you soon.
Sure, you, you wanna explain? Let's keep it this long. Next, we have one yard, one of those. And I'm looking for, I'm looking for smaller old.
Okay, we'll get the smaller ones, that'll be fun. Thank you. Okay, the, uh, under new business, we are doing a preliminary review. Of, uh. Mr. Wengert's. Application to do a major subdivision. Uh, creating four separate lots. On his, uh, current property. And, um. We have the planned, uh, the, uh, outline of the, uh. Plan that he's had, that he's developed. And let me see if I have this. Okay, there it is. He's doing, he's creating four new lots. One, two, three, four. And there is a small, small piece that is left over, which is not eligible for. Uh, a standalone. A piece of, of property. It is only going to be. permitted to be attached to an adjoining property. So our preliminary review is basically to, uh, determine. Whether we have enough information. To warn a public hearing. At our next regular meeting. So which property would that be attached to? Pardon, it would be, uh, according to Mr. Wengert, it would be attached to this property here.
And the same thing is going on with this parcel over here.
Well, that in itself is, is a, it's a viable lot that can exist by itself. Except that it's not accessible.
Right.
If we cannot bring something, uh, a permit to, to make a landlocked piece of land. So it needs to be attached to this lot.
That's more.
Purchases and sale agreement with Dean and Celine Patterson.
Okay.
For them to purchase that piece, they wanted to buy that as a buffer.
Well, I, I talked to Mr. Wengert and that, that's what he indicated he was gonna do. I just wanna make sure that the members understand, uh, wh- what the in- information is. So if we have, uh. And what's your name?
My name's Charles Sale, I go by Chuck, Chuck A.
Uh, Chuck, I work for. John, John, you have.
Oh, yeah.
When I, you know, I'm sorry, when I give you the minutes, I need your name.
Sure. Charles Sale, four three nine sixteen of the.
Jonathan will tell, will remind me.
Great, okay.
Okay, do, uh, any of the members have a question?
I do, on, on, uh. Um, okay, so once we take the, the plot B away. We're left with something that does not have access, right?
That lot would be combined with the one next to it.
Oh.
Definitely.
Because currently, there's four separate lots, this lot goes like this, this one like this, and this one like this. They took a piece off at one point for his son Josh's land, where Josh was gonna put a house site. But what they found, along with everybody that's owned this prior to then. Is the access down to that property so steep, you can't use it as an all-season access. So what I proposed to Mr. Wengert, he, he approached me about purchasing the property. Was cutting this piece off for, to retain for himself or his son's piece. So we could put a nice gradual driveway into that piece, so that could finally have a house built on it. Could give you some tax base, but also so he could sell it as a buildable lot. So he thought that was a great idea, I staked it out roughly. Worked alongside the surveyors for Patton Land, it was Jay Church and Travis Royce. And they, they put the pins on in the ground to indicate where that is. And also down here, because I'm working in a, from stall and driveway, you will say we're for Dean and Celine Patterson. And they'd expressed interest if I bought, buying this buffer piece, it should seem to make sense, because their house, they'd like to build it out here. So I spoke to Mr. Wengert about it, wanted him to buy, divide that off and sell to them and then sell to us for a little less money. The remaining, which would be one, two, three sites. And, uh, we have a person sale agreement in place, my wife Bridget and I, for him. On the remaining fifteen point eight eight acres or whatever it is here. Put it in one site, two site, three site, and again, currently that's four.
Just to clarify, how, how is access to this car, uh, to this lot?
Lot would be contiguous to the one next to it, combines it.
One lot?
That's correct, and it says that, yeah, that says the combined to seven point three one acres.
Okay.
Right, four lots.
Okay, right. Alright, good. Anybody else have any questions?
Supposed to be two hundred feet from, from the road.
That's correct.
That's a hundred and sixty, hundred and.
Sixty-eight feet. That's a good idea, I didn't know it was.
Where, where are you?
This one here.
Where do you get the number? Oh, was that over there, yeah. Yeah.
Was that the lot granted? Uh, you may, you may have to redraw some lines.
Okay, I'll take that on after purchasing it if that.
Uh, the requirement is that, uh.
A little bit of new requirement.
No, it's been in the, it's been in the air for. Oh, okay, two hundred feet. Either two hundred feet or, uh, uh, demon right of way, fifty feet wide. So, uh, you may have to do something with the lot, like honestly.
Right, because the one below it has enough to give up, so.
Yeah, this one does too.
Um, why don't you redraw this thing and, and, uh. What we'll do is, uh. Uh, we'll have to, uh, uh, consider a new, a new, uh.
Well, would it be necessary, because we're buying it as, as one piece? But the town had it listed as four separate, but he had bought it as one group before. So he was looking to divide off the two pieces and we'd buy the balance.
Well, it was listed separately on the tax maps, but he had the tax bill combining them altogether.
I understand that, sure. It, it will be separate lots.
I understand.
That are, that are able to be sold separately.
Sure.
So that need, they need to conform to the minimum standards.
Right, okay.
So, uh. Make those changes and resubmit your plans and we'll, we'll talk about it next time.
I'll let Mr. Wengert know.
So we will, we will, uh. Right?
Continue this.
Well, we will continue it next time. That discussion, alright? That's, that's what preliminary reviews are about, make sure to have all the right information. Yeah, um, you can make, you can make a change if you're here or there.
Yeah.
It's just a, a, a matter of whether they're forty feet, that's all.
Yeah, okay. I'll let him know. Is, uh, for this portion of the meeting for the, his application?
Pardon?
I said, is that all, all the business for Norm's subdivision?
Right, yeah, that is the only thing. What we do is, when we have a submission for an action. We do, we do a preliminary review.
Sure.
To make sure that we have all the information before we go to a public hearing. Because we, we're required to have a public hearing on any of those actions. So, uh. When you get, get it done, we will consider it next time and, uh. Uh, if we have all the information, next time we will warn a public hearing for.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll, I'll let him know.
You're like from nothing ever.
Yeah.
Which is an overall, it's not gonna change anything.
No.
It's just a redraw of all.
Come on over here, guys.
Come on over here.
Got a lot of handouts, so, and I don't know. Um, did anybody get an email with the printouts?
I, 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 what, what you sent me, I sent along today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have hard copies, my, uh.
Okay.
So, speaking for myself, my printer is temperamental.
So I want the staples to it.
Yes, it's a wrong age, Joe, that's, yeah.
I'm the wrong age.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I, I have.
Wow, fancy paper.
I know, stapled didn't have to, wait.
Thank you. Okay, let me, uh. Before we get into, uh. Mr. Garden's, uh, uh. Proposal. I wanted to make sure that you understood, we are not, uh, as a town. Empowered to make decisions about electrical facilities. It's a function of the Public Utilities Commission, uh, on the state level. Uh, our. Uh, contact with, with the owners and, uh, Mr. Garden is simply to ask questions. Get clarification of what, what the project is about. And, uh. Find out what in fact is going to happen. So, uh, with that, Mr. Garden.
Thank you. Do you want me to stand anywhere?
Standing is good.
Standing is good, okay, so, thank you, my name's Tom Garden, my company's name is Tri-Land Partners. Um, uh, I have been developing solar projects in the state of Almont. Two thousand nine's important because that's when the state legislator, legislature passed a law. Encouraging, in fact, almost demanding, um, requiring the Public Utility Commission. To expedite the development of in-state renewable energy projects, expedite was the operative word. And they did that through a standard offer program wherein you could bid your project into a, into a program. Every year, and the lower stock prices, you know, were awarded contracts to buy the power. From those projects, and that's where I live to make a living since two thousand and nine. Um, so, fast forward. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, the legislature passed new legislation. Um, that sort of, um. Require the utilities to be more, um, aggressive in, um. Expediting new renewable energy projects, in-state or out-of-state. And they did that by saying that, um, they wanted more of their mix to come from renewable projects. Maybe the same from hydro, maybe the same from nuclear, but a lot less from oil and gas. So, in this past summer, Renewable, uh, Green Mountain Power. Put on a request for proposals for real estate developers to say, if you're planning a project. Please submit your information and we will, um. Uh, and we'll tell you whether or not we'll buy the power from you. So for the past year now or so, um, I've been working with Jeff and Patty on their site. To see if, uh, we could, we could do a project. And, um, the first step in all of that is to do all of the design work and studies. So that Green Mountain Power can determine whether or not we can interconnect onto the grid. And the power can be used safely, and that usually takes months and months of studies by them. And, and things of that nature, so I couldn't even bid into that, you know? I couldn't even bid into that until I first. Did those connection, connection studies, which were, which were done, um, and finished this summer. I'm gonna pass out some area photography. The first is gonna show you the location from the tax maps, the town tax maps. Of where the parcel question is that we're. Of where the parcel question is that we're, we're trying to cite this project on. The second's gonna give you the conceptual layout of the array as we know it today. It will be subject to change. I wanna say that, um, I usually start this meeting by saying, I'm here. Because I feel it's important, even though. The state does not give the town a whole lot of say in how these projects are cited or developed. Because the Public Utility Commission has the ultimate control over the process, as the chairman alluded to earlier. So, um, with that. And here is a courtesy, because I think it's important. Before a new government comes into town and starts saying, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. That I tell you what I'd like to do and to ask you for questions, for feedback, for guidance. Um, for me to make promises, whatever it is. That makes you feel comfortable, if you could ever can be comfortable, because not every person is. Um, particularly when somebody wants to remove what is now what I call forest. To create what I would call meadow. I would admit that most of my projects over the past fifteen, sixteen years have been on nice, flat, open farmland. I will tell you that there was a lot of pushback. For my doing projects on nice, flat, open farmland, because it usually has prime egg soils. And there are many people out there who, they may like solar energy, but sometimes they don't like it if it's on prime agricultural soils. And so we have to do a lot of extra work to make sure that, um, if we're trenching or anything else of that nature, we're preserving that soil. We're stockpiling it. And at the end of the project, when we decommission and we move everything that's there. And restore it to a natural, its natural state. Um, it's gonna look like a farm field again. In this case. I'm looking at removing trees for what may be as many as twenty acres plus or minus. And it won't be restored to forest necessarily, but it will be a beautiful meadow. I can't just leave it looking like, you know, devastation. It has to be a beautiful green field if you.
What you can leave it, but you've got the solar array there, you're not taking it out again. What are you leaving?
I have to, I, I have to promise to the state and I have to put up. Hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars plus. In a fund that's there for twenty-five or thirty-five years. That, that's there so that that gets removed at the end of the term.
Oh, yeah.
Gets removed and it gets restored. And that's everything above ground and everything that's below ground.
Okay.
Question, what's the term? Yeah, what's your, down the term?
The term, the term, the contract with the, with the utility is twenty-five years. They want to be able to buy the power at a fixed price for twenty-five years.
And so, at the end of the term?
At the end of the term, I'm obligated on a state law to decommission that project.
Okay, so what do you do with the solar panels at that point in time?
My guess is that those solar panels are gonna be shipped to a third world country and reinstalled someplace. Because solar panels that were sent up to space forty years ago to power spaceships and satellites are still operating.
Right.
There's no techno, technology right now for recycling them.
There's lousy technology for six, everybody's saying they have all the right technology.
Can you hear it now?
But I, but I do believe that the aluminum, the steel, copper.
The chemical contact.
The chemical contact within the, um, the solar moth wafers, yes. Nobody knows what they're gonna do with that just yet, but I believe that these are still gonna be. Capable of producing probably still eighty percent of what they produced on day one. In, um, in twenty-five, thirty years from now. That's my expectation. So. Um, so I think it's important just to start the dialogue. Um, because you can never start the dialogue too early. The process, I think, um, is good. I, I like the way it works. But the last thing you wanna do is get a letter here at the town. With the rest of the chair of the planning board and the select board. Saying that, um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna put up three, four, five megawatt solar project and you say, fine, man, I write about this. So well before any of that happens, I wanna come in, I wanna talk about the project. And I'd like to definitely get any feedback you can give me. In that, or any questions I can answer now or if, if I don't have the answer, I'll come back to you with. As I start the process. Because eventually they will give what's called a forty-five day letter. Which is where I have to notify all the states, municipal, my neighbors, et cetera. Um, that I'm moving forward into the permitting stage. And I can do that forty-five days for when that letter lands on your desk.
One of the questions I think that, uh. Like history and reflection to come to have is. What, what are the impacts on the, on the property?
The beauty of this for some community, like my first project was in the town of Williamstown. And I had, I bought a piece of land for that project. It was fourteen acres. And they were collecting twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars a year in property taxes. And we paid nearly thirty thousand most of that project and we had for the last twelve years. And, um, you know, if there's the beauty of a project like that, it doesn't put any, any kind of stress on school systems. School systems, water systems, traffic or anything else of that nature. So, uh, I'm not sure, I'm not saying that that's.
I, I, I was just asking your question because, uh, I didn't know, uh, how that work.
I think that's a very important question though, because.
Well, I think it's gonna be important to the select board.
Yes, but, but that doesn't include education tax. Because the way the law was rewritten twelve years ago was. And so we don't pay towards the education portion of the tax. That is a separate tax that we pay into the state education fund.
Well, yeah, that, that's, the state is collecting all of, all of the education taxes anyway.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, we pay it to the town, but the town that's, gets to, gives to the state. Um, I, I, I have personal interest in it because I live across the road. And I see, I see that wonderful hillside with all the trees on it. And I'm wondering what I'm gonna be looking at. And I don't even know in relation to what I'm looking at, where that project is.
That's a valid concern.
How, how, I mean, how do I find out? I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it. I just wanna know.
I could, I could tell you pretty much, I was driving around to see where, so it's gonna be, it's way down low.
Oh, it's gonna be down low?
So it's way down low. So from your house, I don't, I don't really think you could probably even see it at all.
I.
You might be able to.
I see in, in the winter time, when there's no leaves on the, on the trees, I see the house you built.
Uh, where Lucas lives.
Right.
So it's gonna be to the right of that.
Okay.
So be to the right of that behind, you know, holding more behind what you'd be B and B.
Yeah, right.
Over that way.
Oh, it's over down, towards B and B?
Yes, in that direction.
Oh, okay.
But, but it's.
And lower, you say?
It's mainly down low. I mean, it goes up some, but.
Yeah.
So. Um, Jim Ryan will definitely be able to see it.
Yeah.
Actually, the, what, what I'd grow, grow around, I would say, if you're right at, you go up Gates Road and you're right at, uh. Uh, Thornton Gates's driveway.
Right.
Um, right at that intersection, I think you could see it there.
Uh huh.
Um. I don't think. There again, different kinds of year, Bruce probably could see it.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I, I built my house. Fifty-three years ago. Because I wanted, now, the, the way I built it is because I wanted to take a look at Magic Mountain. And I did for years. And now the trees are so high, I can't see anything.
Yeah, yeah, you, uh. I would be surprised, depending on exactly where they place it.
Yeah.
Not that, not that you're special or anything, but. You're down low enough, so I don't think you'll really see it.
I just wanna.
Higher.
Yeah.
I know, I know it will up to, up to Jim Ryan's. Um, I would assume Nick and Robin. Will be, they, they've got quite a few trees in front of their house.
Well, they, they've got, all those trees are up, uh, now.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to get an idea.
I, I mean, I think, like going up Route eleven, will you be able to see it? I think you will sometimes here. It's, it's quite a buffer kind, kind of in front of it, but.
Is it, I, don't, it goes, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So it goes in behind like Charlie's garage, like B and B branch or up in behind there?
Yes, yeah.
So it's not like right on the road?
No, 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 very.
Yeah.
I think significantly.
In there, but it's, the way the land goes in. I shouldn't say, well, it's not fairly level, it's still uphill, but it's, it's quite a level and then all of a sudden it goes straight up.
Yeah.
And this isn't gonna be where it goes straight up. This is, because they can't even build it there.
It's just tucked.
It's kinda tucked in that. Along that whole level or along that.
Alright, thank you. I, uh, I just wanted to get an idea.
I'm just kinda guessing that that.
Yeah, well, I. I wanna make sure that, uh, the members have a change to that. I, I, I didn't mean to dominate the cost of that much.
I realize there's a plus or minus, but is it twenty or thirty plus or minus?
You just?
Give.
Um.
That one says twenty, this one says thirty.
We're trying to, um, determine because when I originally designed the project. I designed it as a four megawatt project. Because there was own, there was less than five megawatts of new capacity on the, um, substation in Lundary. They've done a lot of work.
Uh huh.
Not only they've done a lot, they've spent a lot of money. Yes.
Yeah.
On the substation and upgrading the distribution lines, the lines, wires and poles that you see on.
Right, yeah.
And, and, and the new number on that substation is it has a capacity of ten megawatts.
Oh.
Of additional capacity. It's double. And, and that's kinda surprised me. I can't build any larger than five under the rules and guidelines if you want the state. Um, I could build twenty megawatts, but I have to sell that out of state.
Yeah.
You know, this for G and P to buy the power has to be five megawatts. Um.
Is that?
At the most. Go ahead.
Is that five megawatts? If they, if they, so you can only build a five megawatt system in one area or one?
Yes.
You could build more, I hope.
Yeah.
If, if they would take the power.
Yeah, there could be another one anywhere on the distribution line between. Lundary and where that distribution line ends from, that could almost be to Chester. And, and down into Lundary.
If they would, if they could be.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the aspects is, you know, I, I, I'm very careful about where I try to cite projects. Um, it's a lot of wasted time and money if I'm near flood zone. If I'm near a deer wintering area, if I'm near a bernal pool, if I'm near wetlands. You know, you waste a lot of time and a lot of money and everybody, you know, got excited about nothing. Um, and, and first step is, you know, doing the interconnection studies, which are a considerable cost. But need to know whether the substation can handle that. And the only way I can find that is just submit an application with a lot of drawings. To, uh, Green Mountain Power. So. They, they are steering developers to the southern tier of Vermont. There's been so much renewable energy built up north in a lot of farm fields. They're definitely hillier down there, but the substations are overtaxed up north. And they'd like to see more down here. So the argument becomes, is it really, you know, is it really a good area? And the only way I can answer that is if there's no environmental impact. And you can justify, you know, removing twenty or thirty acres of trees. And in an area that is tens of thousands of trees. Then, you know, maybe it's, it's reasonable, particularly with the understanding that. This is relatively short-term, if you think about twenty-five years, I think it's short-term now. And at the end of all that, there's a relatively beautiful meadow sitting up the side of a hill.
What, what is the, uh, what are the age of the trees mostly in that area that you're trying to think?
There, there's gotta be mixed ages, but, you know.
So, I would say. Younger stuff.
Twenty, thirty years?
Younger stuff.
Yeah. Anyway, um, any of the members have more questions? These, this is, this is our opportunity to, to grill.
So what the situation, the, the logistics are that you buy this property?
No, I'm gonna lease it.
Okay.
Jeff and Patty.
And then.
They'd like to hold this in. But I'm going to, um. Um, build a, a new line up the gravel driveway that go through the small house that they have up there. And that'll be above ground and that'll go right in the hill and to. Right to the public. So I won't be building a new road from Route eleven. You won't, you'll see those lines that go up the road, but you won't see, I don't think you'll see this from the road, more frankly. Um. No traffic, I mean, it's traffic for six to nine months while we're building it, but after that, you know, maybe it gets one visit a week. There's no lights, there's no fuses, essentially no noise, no moving parts. So it becomes just something that's there, generating power, but not, you know, generating a lot of anything other than that. It's all protected by a wildlife security fence that surrounds the property. That's because of the voltage of it. Anybody could, you know, get in there if they wanted to, but it's just to keep the animals away from the most.
But you're gonna keep the grass down.
Brush hog, always brush hog. We have to, we have to seed that so that, that, you know.
You're not hiring goats and.
Well, you know, I haven't moved that out yet. Uh, yeah, yeah, cause.
You know, it doesn't cost you anything.
No, it's, uh, well, that's, that's a, it's part of the business at this point in time. Yeah.
I mean, I could buy them and then, uh, if they get old, I, I can put them in the freezer.
Quite, quite frankly, sheep might be better, cause goats like to eat a lot of everything. They'll eat the worms and everything else.
It was an innocuous grant.
There's a few on the end of the western road, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I've started preliminary discussions with the agency of natural resources about environmental impacts. And there's, um, you know, so the people looking at it from the standpoint of wildlife habitat. And I've been told it's, it's not a high priority habitat area. So, you know, they'll still wanna do all the kind of tests that they wanna do. Um, I'll need to have a bat study done, which is, you know, the, um, recording of bat sounds over several nights. By somebody who sits in the woods at night. Um. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll be studying to make sure that. Um, particularly after trees are cleared, that we do a good job of upgrading and. And monitoring the way the water will move downhill.
Yeah.
So that that doesn't, um, impact the stream down the bottom of the hill. Uh, so, so there's a lot of planning and things of that nature. I have Cribs and Lancing in Old Chester, we're gonna be doing. The Sioux Hard Engineering, who are very highly respected. Um, I've always been a same lawyer since two thousand and nine, as have a lot of the other. Environmental people. I'm a small company, I'm a one-man person, but I have a great team and they're all Vermont people. And they all care about the state, they all care about the environment, they all care about, you know, wildlife and everything else. We're not. We're not bad people. I don't think we would've been in business this long. And, uh.
Be your wildlife, you're gonna have to. Keep my bears out of your, out of your area, because I, I have bears coming to my apple trees. And I know, I, bears got all over the place and I, I never see them.
Well.
But I know they're there.
I see them.
I went into a bear once, that, I, I just, I don't want that to happen again. I just.
Well, no, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a scary business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's not a fair fight, I don't think.
No, no.
They're usually more scared than you.
Yeah, but you don't think in that way.
You don't think in that way, but you're still there.
Anyway, um, any more questions from the members? Uh, I, I do wanna make sure that you appreciate, that you know that we appreciate your coming. And, uh, talk first about it. Uh, because, you know, when we got the information, we weren't sort of. Know what's, what's going on and, uh, it's good to know that, uh. Uh, the project is going to be serious and it's going to be well taken care of and whatnot, so. I appreciate you coming.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, it's a two-way street. You know, anytime anybody has a question or a concern or a constituent, you know, has a question or concern.
Yeah.
I'm always available. I always wanna talk, I always wanna sit at the table.
I address and if, uh, if there is a question, I will let you know.
Yeah, fantastic. That's great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your time. I would appreciate it. And Jonathan, why don't you, like, call just to, please?
Well, I just want to also mention, your plan, you mentioned that. Does that stack, does the planning commission start early in the six thirty then?
Well, actually, we started at six.
Oh.
But it was a planning commission.
And this is the voting, yes, there's six thirty.
Out of adjustment. So we, we have two different.
Sorry?
Have two different permissions. And, and, and it's all the same English.
Wow, that's efficient.
You were earlier.
I also want to mention, so. Public Utility Commission, let's do our homework. And what it says is, wants to be intimately familiar with your energy plan.
Uh huh.
In your, in your town plan. And, um, just in looking at that, it's seven years old now, but it does say that, um. With the help of, I guess. with the help of, I guess, um, the, um, the Wyndham, Wyndham.
Regional planning commission.
I call the regional planning commission now. The, um, the capacity for the town is that you, you have a potential renewable energy generation capacity of two hundred and eighty-five megawatts, which I, the most would be five. And it could be two hundred and eighty more.
So, we wrote, a, as a matter of fact, when you came in, we were talking about our town plan and this update.
Oh.
So, uh, we're working on that. Uh, but, uh, it'll be a work in progress.
Good, well, I, I, I've seen a lot of towns, you know, except then, I, I mean, I did some amount of work on that. And I really admire all that off, that whole process.
Well, and we're all volunteers too.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
We hope get the big bucks.
By the way, I have been, I have been interacting with the executive director of the, uh, Public Utility Commission, Ross Cutney. And he's been talking, he's a good guy, he's a.
Jason, yeah, he, uh, he's talked to me about, uh, you know, the, uh, the issue, uh, of, and he pointed out to me that, uh, we really, as our town, have very little input on the permitting process.
Yeah.
And, uh, for that, I remember, I, I, I still, uh, uh, appreciate you coming and, uh, and letting us know.
That, that's a technicality, but I like it to be interactive.
Okay.
It just works to benefit everybody, I want.
Thanks again.
Thank you for your time.
See you later.
Yeah, I remember we were, we were asked to identify spaces where we could do this or that on renewable energy, so that when they, as if we didn't, if we didn't have to.
Mm-hmm.
But if we did, then when somebody came in to do it, they would give us the courtesy of doing it on one of the places we said would go.
Well.
That was some deal.
The, the, the fact of identifying it made, uh, any other locations questionable.
Yeah.
Because if we identified people, uh, for places, those are the preferred places.
Yeah.
If they want to do something there, we can, we can talk about it. If they want to do something elsewhere, uh, we're not really going to do, uh, talk about it. That's, that was the thinking at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and remember, we already have one, it didn't change that.
Yeah, right, yeah. Well, that was, don't forget, that was eight years, or seven years ago now.
Thirteen more years.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. We didn't have that then.
Yeah.
So, uh, anyway, uh, if there is no other discussion that.
Do we have something on North Hill as well? Or was that an old email that, it just moved up to the top of the thread? Uh, I'm guessing by your look. I'm looking at an old. Yeah, you're looking at the last, the last, last month. Very good.
Okay.
Good question.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Indeed.
We are adjourned at seven fifteen.